Everybody, I'd like to call to order our City Council redevelopment meeting of October 11th, 2010. Let's all pledge allegiance there.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second on the agenda, any changes to the order of the agenda. Mr. Malby, any recommended changes?
None this evening.
Okay, council. Good. Reports from closed session. We actually usually have closed session before city council meetings, starting at 6:00 to 6:30. We're actually meeting after, so there's nothing to report, but there will be a report after closed session this evening. Moving on to item number four on the agenda, council communication and announcements. Mr. Grocott, maybe start with that then.
I just have one. I went to the New Canton Restaurant in San Carlos last week, and my fortune cookie said, "People find it difficult to resist your persuasive manner." And so I thought I'd just share that. That's it.
Okay. Mr.?
I can't follow that. But I have nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Klein?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Ahmad?
My fortune cookie said that wasn't chicken, but that's...
That's it. Okay. Well, I'll follow in with a few items. I really want to congratulate the chamber for hosting and basically showing off our town this last weekend. We had our annual art and wine fair. I don't know how many thousands of people go, but even with the baseball games going on, people still showed up. Great utilization of a lot of volunteers, artists. There were some really nice things in the booth. Businesses all kind of contributed in and helped with a lot of activity downtown. But it is surely one of those unique events. A lot of cities have them. We have them, and we're very, very proud of, of course, showing off our city. I saw actually quite of an attendance of both our City San Carlos police officers and sheriffs working together, actually mostly talking together, and actually talking to a lot of people. They were very busy both days in their booth and people coming up and talking about some of the changes that we're going through. So it was a great event. Also, just this coming weekend, we always have lots of things in San Carlos. The Lions Club has their annual tri-tip this Saturday. You could go to their webpage and find out more. And Hiller is actually having their annual, it's a reception dinner and auction. And actually, the name is Wings, Wheels, and Whirlybirds. So both of those are Saturday evening. Encourage you to look up on their webpages to find out more. So with that, we'll move on to, let's see, item number five. We have a couple of short presentations. First, it will be our awards for certified green businesses. And I believe we have Gina Valley from State Farm here. Come on up. I have something to present to you.
Gina, welcome. I've been in this town 31 years, and I recognize your name so many times. I know we've met a few times, but you've been in this town longer than that, probably?
About 10 years.
About 10 years, okay. Well, I see your name all. I appreciate the services you have. Gina and her business is now our 28th certified business in San Carlos. We're very proud of that. They work, of course, with a lot of our, basically, both reduction of garbage and recycling, a lot of conservation with energy and with water, the pollution control. And Gina and her business and all these other businesses up to now have gone through a vigorous checklist and kind of revision and updating of their businesses to become truly the 28th certified business in the city of San Carlos. So let me read a little proclamation to you, your people, your company. Whereas the city of San Carlos has partnered with San Mateo County Pigeonie California Water Service Bayside Wasteland Management Bay Area Air Quality Control to bring Bay Area Green Business Program. It's certified over 1,000 firms as green business to sedate. Okay. Whereas, the Green Business Program is a successful partnership in the city of San Carlos, local utilities agencies that assist, recognize, and promotes businesses and government agencies that operate voluntarily in a more environmentally responsible way. Whereas, to be certified as a green business, participation must comply with all the regulations, meet the program's standards, conserving resources, preventing pollution, as I said, minimizing waste, helping businesses improve and implement green practices for their operations. So whereas Gina Valley State Farm Insurance has successfully completed the extensive green business checklist reviewing certification process and is now a certified green business operating in the great city of San Carlos. So it's therefore I proclaim that I, Randy Royce, Mayor, and our entire city council commend you for being chosen as San Carlos Certified Green Business. Congratulations.
Okay, and next, second is also done onstage here, and we have Frank. Come on up. I've never called you Mr. Harrington, but I've always called you Frank because everybody knows Frank in the city of San Carlos. Several years of service, most recently are what we call COS, or Community Officers Programs Services in the city of San Carlos. But Frank is on Laurel Street many times. You'll see him on Old County Road. He's always walking. Sometimes he's on the phone. But the most important thing is after years of service as a police officer and actually working originally in the sheriff's office, he has dedicated a lot of his time, and time is really the most precious thing we have, to the city of San Carlos and has given freely of his time and his skill sets to, basically, when people come and turn on to Laurel Street or San Carlos Avenue, there's usually this guy dressed like this, walking, and you see him. And it really does make an impression. It's a really good feel. Safety is so important to the people of San Carlos. And it's not the police department. It's the people like Frank that make this happen. So we have a frame around the proclamation we're going to give you because there are a few years involved. So let me have that right here. And so it is my honor to commend Frank Harrington for his 35 years of service to the San Carlos Police Department. He has served numerous roles in law enforcement, beginning at the sheriff's office in 1965, where he faithfully served the community of San Carlos by putting himself in harm's way numerous occasions in the protection of the community as a reserve police officer from 1970 to 1990. And whereas he's graciously donated his time as a community service officer from 1995 to 2010, where he spent much of his time spreading goodwill, assisting citizens, and argumenting the police department with his friendly and helpful nature. He's received countless awards from the community, including from the school district for night security duties, recognized police deputy for assistance, running security detail for Vice President Al Gore in 1986, and the International Footprint Association in 1997 for his selfless dedication of the community, to name a few. And where during his 35-year career in San Carlos here, he used to dedicate himself to public service, having been in the face of San Carlos in the streets, recognized for his humanistic approach, kindness, and overall commitment to the city of good living. And so therefore, I, Randy Royce, Mayor of San Carlos, and again, entire city council, would like to commend him for, and let me read very slowly. I think these four words really talk about you, Frank. For his countless hours of unpaid public service, his dedication, his commitment, and his loyalty to the city of San Carlos. Congratulations.
I am very grateful for this personal honor, and I just wanted to extend my gratitude, my deepest gratitude to Chief Roethlis, and to the police department for giving me this honor and for the city council going with it. You know, I didn't expect this. And I want to say that the honor goes to the police department, to the full-time patrolmen that have been here for many, many years, to Chief Roethlis, for the commander, Rich Sinfield, John Reed, and all the sergeants and all the patrolmen, Mark Robbins, the commander and sergeants, Eric Stanley, Scott King, Kurt, Greg Miller, Rick, and the explorers, Peter, and everybody else, Daryl, Mike, Jenna. The honor goes to those people who have served for many, many years and who have retired since, with many years of service. The patience and the endurance of these people for the last year has been tremendous with what is happening in San Carlos and the situation with the county. So the honor is extended to them. The city council and the mayor and everybody should honor these people who have had the patience and the endurance to go through this. And I wish all those that I've mentioned and everybody else, good health and a great time with this new endeavor, and I really mean this. And I hope to have, just for the record, I hope to give another 10 years, starting November 1st.
That's my goal, so we'll see what happens.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
And thank you for your family. I see them in the back row there. You guys should be congratulated, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you. We're on to item six on the agenda. Public comment is reserved, and in fact, we encourage people who would like to speak on any topic that's not on this evening's agenda would be welcome to do so now. I have one speaker card. We'll start with Dave Mandelkern, and then anybody else that would like to speak would follow Dave. Dave, welcome to San Carlos.
Thank you very much, Mayor Royce, and members of the council, city staff, and the public. My name is Dave Mandelkern. I am a trustee for the San Mateo County Community College District and a candidate for San Mateo County Treasurer-Tax Collector in the November 2nd election. I'm here this evening to apologize to the council, to the employees of San Carlos, and the people of San Carlos if I have offended you in any way by posting campaign signs in the city of San Carlos. We had signs posted last week in accordance with the local ordinance, and I received a call from Mayor Royce on Saturday afternoon and an email from Mayor Royce on Saturday afternoon, giving me an ultimatum to remove the signs by 5:00 this afternoon or that he would take action against me at this meeting here tonight. I explained to Mayor Royce that these signs have been posted on private property, and he stated that at least two of the signs were on the area that was, I believe, a drive-in site at the corner of Holly and Industrial Boulevard. And he listed 16 sign locations on Industrial Boulevard, Harbor, Old County Road, and El Camino Real. I drove through the area on Saturday afternoon to remove many of the signs. The remainder were removed on Sunday morning. I believe that with the exception of those two signs, which were posted on the fence around that property on the northeast corner of Holly and Industrial, the rest were posted on private property. Mayor Royce had said that he would research the private property issues and bill me for the time spent investigating this. In the face of those threats, I felt I had no choice but to remove the signs. However, I would like to point out that I have had requests from my supporters in the city of San Carlos for over 75 signs. I've requested that they take the signs down so as not to offend anyone or violate anyone's sense of sensibilities. But many of the supporters, including a labor union which has their office on Industrial Boulevard, two businesses which are supporters of mine on Old County Road, my dentist, a real estate agent, a resident who lives in the area between Industrial and Old County Road, have taken their signs down as well. Again, I apologize for any offense caused. I don't wish to engage in any protracted dispute with the city of San Carlos. I would like, just in closing, to point out, though, that what Mayor Royce refers to as campaign litter has been held by the federal courts, most notably in the case of Baldwin v. Redwood City, to be the purest form of free speech and is highly protected, and the courts have ruled the cities have very limited authority in regulating the posting of signs. But again, my apologies if I've offended anyone in San Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. I would like to say I know Dave, have total respect for this gentleman. He is an electrical engineer from Stanford. He has spent his whole life in dedicating his life to so many good organizations, and of course, he's running for a position on the county. I'm not here to rebuttal anything you've said. I've actually sent a response to Dave on his claims, many of the things that he just said. I sent that to him. If the public wants to see my response to him and addressing my responses, that would be fine. I'd make that available to anybody who would like to see it. But I do appreciate you coming. Again, the utmost respect for you. There are issues with signs, and that's what my claim was. And again, thanks, thanks for coming, and best of luck with the election. Thank you. Anybody else, public comment? Great. Move on to item seven. Approval of consent calendar. Consent calendar are considered to be routine, will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to remove for separate action.
Remove items seven B and seven D.
B as in boy, and E?
D.
D. B and D, okay. Any other items? Any items from anybody else? Okay, can I hear a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve a consent calendar items seven A, seven C, and items seven E through I.
Second. Okay, motion second. Roll call, please. Ms. Baldwin?
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes. Okay, I'd like to go through these, Mr. Grocott, so we'll start off with seven B. Your comments, please.
Sure. On seven B, on the minutes, is the minutes. And on item seven E, approve letter agreement with Jeff Malby for interim city manager services. And then after that, there's a long discourse given. Typically, our minutes, as you read through the other parts of them, are action items and don't give really much of the discussion. In this case, there was much given of the discussion, and I have a problem with that because the way it is written and the detail given on some people who spoke versus others, to me, it looks like an indictment and conviction all rolled into one. So I would just like to have all the discourse stricken from this. There's no need for it. We could just have approved letter of agreement, and as is pretty typical, you know, the action taken, and that's it.
Okay. I appreciate your comments. Any thoughts from Ms. Baldwin or our city attorney? Any recommendations here on, can we adjust anything here? What do you recommend?
Well, I think the council has the control over the minutes as they would like to reflect it, so you're free to take Councilmember Grocott's suggestion and have the minutes reflect just the action. I think when I'm looking at the minutes, the other items do report action taken, so that would not be unprecedented to have the minutes reflect that way. And there is a tape of the meeting, so the tape would contain the complete accurate record of what happened, but the minutes don't have to reflect the verbatim and all the detail.
Okay. So maybe we could get to vote. Before we get to vote, any council members have any thoughts or recommendations before we vote on this particular item? As we would be to vote, I would assume that we would make a motion, either make adjustments or as-is or something. Or maybe, I would recommend maybe make a motion as-is with knowing what your concern is, seeing where that leads us. But any thoughts before we get to that point?
Mayor Royce, I know the city attorney that sometimes we have action minutes, and sometimes there's long discussions, and maybe that means we need to have a discussion about how the minutes are written. But I'm not going to strike anything from the record. This is a public record. I'm not going to go hide anything. So I'll be voting to approve as-is, but I don't feel we need to discuss any more. I'm not going to take anything off the record.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Anybody? Matt, anything else? Okay, so I would like to make, so I'd like to hear, get a motion for seven, this is seven, seven B as-is.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve consent calendar item seven B as-is.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
We have a first and second. Roll call. Ms. Baldwin?
Oh, wait. Excuse me. Let's have discussion before we vote.
Yes? Mr. Grocott?
So these items that are on here, as I said, the comments by one of the members of the public, Bruce Rinaldi, simply says San Carlos outlined, of San Carlos outlined his thoughts regarding the interim city manager agreement with Jeff Malby. Doesn't really give any color to what he said. But when it goes on to Councilmember Grisilli, Councilmember Klein, Councilmember Ahmad, and Mayor Royce, twice, it gives comments by the mayor, and then some continuing comments and comments by the city attorney, gives the color of the discussion. In my comments, I made much more, many more comments than simply what it says here, responded that he felt the decision was made to spend the public money and felt the public has a right to know and believed it was a reportable item. I said much more than that. I talked about our municipal code and whether or not I felt we followed it, and some other items. And since then, I've done some research on the Brown Act. And do you know, there's things in the Brown Act that actually state, from past cases, that salary raises are not to be discussed in closed session, they're supposed to be discussed and determined in open session?
I want to make sure, wait, Mr. Grocott? I want to make sure we stay on the topic of the motion of approving the minutes as written here, please.
Right. The fact that even this item was on the consent calendar, meaning there was not going to, there was no intent to have any discussion unless the item was pulled, gives further indication that a decision was already made, and there was no plan to have any discussion on the item outside of closed session. And again, when I look at the Brown Act, that's not what it says. And there's comments in here. The reason I bring this up is there's comments in here that say, you know, basically that the different council members seem to be pretty well-versed in the Brown Act. I read it. I read the parts that give the exemptions for personal matters and what that means and when you can use it and when you can't use it. And it just further buttresses my point that I don't think we did the whole thing correctly. And that's not reflected, my comments about that are not reflected in these minutes. And I don't appreciate it. I don't appreciate, again, that the way this is written, it appears as an indictment and conviction all rolled into one.
Okay. I appreciate that. Any other comments in council?
Question to the chair. Does the gentleman have an amendment to offer?
Sure. I've already stated, I would like to have the minutes approved with the verbiage stricken and taken out, so we just have approved letter of agreement and the vote, and that's it. That's how most of our, if you look through here, we voted years ago as a council to take the burden off the city clerk on the minutes and not what, it used to be before, you know, when King was mayor, Don Eaton was mayor, and even when I was the mayor. The city clerk wrote much more about the minutes and what was said and about the discussion, similar to what you see in the fire department's minutes. It was determined some time ago that her workload and her office workload was too much to give those kind of minutes. We would rely on the tapes, as the city attorney has stated, all this is, you know, anybody can go to a video and watch what they want. And there's no need for this kind of verbiage. So my motion is to approve written minutes that strike the verbiage and just give the item and the action, and that's it.
Okay, so we have an amendment motion here from Mr. Grocott. If I have a second? Okay, borrowing a second, then go back to the original motion. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes. Okay, seven D. Mr. Grocott, please.
On this item, I just wanted to hear from staff a report on this item.
Okay.
Mr. Sowicki. Hi. So seven D, just to let the public know, this is authorization of the executive director to execute a professional service agreement with Buckston Company for community ID business retention and attraction services. That doesn't help them very much. Can you go a little further, please? Thank you.
Good evening, Agency Board. Mark Sowicki, Economic Development Manager and Housing Manager. So the item is to authorize the executive director to execute a professional services agreement with Buckston Company. The service they provide is business retention and attraction services. Their brand name of it is community ID. The San Carlos Economic Development Plan, which was adopted for 2010 to 2013, includes two action steps that relate to this proposal. One of the action steps is to obtain a sales tax leakage analysis that identifies retail and commercial needs in San Carlos for San Carlos residents and businesses that are not being met within the city. A leakage analysis gives the economic development department the ability to figure out what types of businesses it should be trying to recruit to fill identified gaps. Another action step is to create customized recruitment packages informed by that leakage analysis and the branding and marketing research that we've done, and target specific businesses and industries. The unique service that Buckston provides is, they take that leakage analysis, they figure out what the profile is for San Carlos, and they match it up with what retailers are trying to provide. Retailers use the exact same information to figure out where they should locate their operations. So rather than having economic development staff, myself, just sort of blindly looking for anybody who will come to San Carlos, this is a way of matching up those retailers who have, who would identify with San Carlos and the demographics that are here and in an area where they don't have that kind of a presence. Buckston has done this for many other communities. They also provide this for retailers. They can arrange for that link-up between cities and retailers because they have the relationships on both sides. They're also highly recommended from a number of other cities, my counterparts in Concord, Cupertino, Rivermore. I've spoken to staff there. They're very happy with Buckston's service.
Great. So, Mr. Grocott, you asked a question. Any other specific questions from the staff?
Yes, on this item, of course. Please. So you said that retailers use the same exact service, and the thing that I'm wondering about here is, A, if that's true, why do we need to do it? B, when we have the information, what will we do with it? Are we going to create an incentive program to bring certain industries here that prove that we have leakage of some kind of, I guess what you're saying is, you know, if we don't have a pet food store in town, for instance, we do, but I'm just giving you an example. Let's say we don't have a pet food store, so people go other places to buy pet food. We've got a lot of people in town who want pet food, and, okay, so now we know that. What are we going to do?
You would identify what pet food company that is, get a contact with them. Buckston can help us provide the contact. Then you provide them with the exact information that they would use to make a location decision because we have the information, we can provide it to them, and we're speaking their language. They may not have San Carlos on the map. They may look at Redwood City. They may look at San Mateo. They may look anywhere else up and down the peninsula. The fact that we're contacting them and saying, "Have you looked at us? We've got room for you here in San Carlos," they'll say, they'll take notice of that.
So there's no incentive program. We're just going to do something like what we did with Trader Joe's, where we said, hey, we've got a hue and cry in this town that wants Trader Joe's. So we go to Trader Joe's, and we say, "This is the information we have. This is our demographics," and so on and so forth, "and we think your store would do well here," and they match it up.
Right.
Okay. Now, on the other hand, let's say, you know, right now, everybody knows we have a lot of coffee shops in town, and so Mojo's Coffee wants to come into San Carlos. Do we look at this report and say, "Sorry, Mojo, you're not welcome here because we know we already have a lot of coffee shops, and our report shows us that?"
I don't think we'd turn away any business, but we definitely would not be out recruiting some firm where we have a surplus. some firm where we have a surplus rather than a leakage.
Okay. So this more has to do with what your staff might do in terms of rolling out some welcoming material?
Correct.
Okay. And then last question...
It's also... Sorry to interrupt.
That's all right.
It's also actually very useful for retention. If we have a firm that they don't think they're doing very well here, they think they might leave. If you can show them that there are customers for them here, you can actually use this information to help them market themselves to those customers. That's another thing that Buckston has helped with. And it makes the companies that are already here operate better.
Okay. And then, the last question I have is, there's no information in the report that shows, you know, Mr. Royce has often talked about performance evaluation, and there's not anything in here that shows us that if we spend $45,000, that we'll get a payback of $90,000 in two years or something. I mean, you know, something to that effect. What are we getting for $45,000?
I think the greatest determinant of the payback is how much you use the information. In fact, that's one of the things that one of my colleagues at another city told me, that some cities buy the service, and they don't do anything with it. And that's what's really, you know, she uses it on every sales pitch. So that's what's most important and gets a lot of bang for the buck for it.
And then, another question I just thought of, and this will be my last question, is this seems like something that either the Chamber of Commerce could work on alone, or at least they ought to be in concert on this. Has there been discussions? What's the... What's going on there?
The service that's provided is that the information that we get through this service, we can make available to businesses, and we can make that available through the Chamber of Commerce. And in fact, Dave Bouchard, the Chamber CEO, was at the EDAC meeting when this was discussed, and he thought, you know, this sounded like a really great service that he thought the Chamber could take advantage of.
Has there been any discussion with the Chamber since that meeting?
Not since that meeting, no.
Further discussion? Okay. All right. Those are my questions.
Great. Thank you. Actually, I have a follow-up, if I could.
And I should add, there's also a representative from Buckston here. If you had any questions for...
Could she perhaps speak to that issue? She may not have any hard data about performance, but if she could even give us something that's a storyline of, you know, some results that she's seen, that would be good. You can barely tell. I'm wavering on this item, and I need to be convinced.
Okay.
This is Lisa Hill from Buckston Company. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, honourable members of the council. My name is Lisa Hill. I'm the Vice President of the Community ID Division for the Buckston Company. And I work with a little over 100 communities in California, the big cities like San Jose and San Diego, cities around you like Hayward, Rivermore, Los Altos, various degrees of their economic development program, and various degrees of success. And as Mark told you, the way that you utilize the information really determines how successful you are. So, Rivermore, California, for example, got a regional concept, a bistro concept to their downtown. They have a nice eclectic mix in their downtown. They wanted to keep the regional concepts kind of in that vein. They also recruited to infill a Starbucks location. They recruited another coffee shop. They were able to recruit a Nescafe Toll House. And they're also utilizing the information to recruit industry. So we isolated components of the educated labor pool, and they're utilizing that information to make decisions about industrial firms. We have successfully landed for our communities over 30 million square feet of retail space in the past four years. That's an increased annual sales tax base of over $5 billion. So we've provided case studies to your staff from cities like Hesperia, who have landed six new concepts, as well as the Courtyard Marriott as a direct result of our information. We have provided case studies from San Jose, from Paris, California, from Selma, from Dinuba, which is a small community. They've successfully landed 19 new concepts, as well as a Holiday Inn, as a direct result of our information. So we've had a lot of success in California, as well as other communities. We work with over 650 in the U.S. And the uniqueness that we bring to this is the retailer perspective. We work for retailers over 2,000. We work for Bass Pro. We work for McCormick &amp; Schmick's, Tommy Bahama, Hugo Boss, Walmart, California Pizza Kitchen. And those retailers utilize our information to answer, "Where should we be? We want to understand the heart of our consumer base, so we understand strategic location decisions. We want to understand that consumer base, answering the question of, 'Who is my consumer? How can I increase the value of that current consumer? And how can I reach out and touch other consumers who are similar to that consumer base?'" And that's what we do in the retail industry. Now, the benefit for you is understanding at a very granular household level, up to 75,000 individual characteristics, eight people per household, updated every eight weeks. And we are experience-only U.S. partners, so we're looking at credit card swipes, grocery store work cards, a number of indicators that we give away about ourselves as consumers. The advantage for you is you now understand what retailers are looking for, that complexion of core consumers, your complexion of core consumers. We're doing homework, and we're running filters. We're looking at retailers that are currently expanding in your region of California in the next two years. We're looking at whether or not they currently put stores on the ground in markets like yours. Retailers are not pioneers. They want to know, "Have you ever done this before, and was it a success?" We identify the core consumer base, so that we can help that retailer understand there are enough core consumers to support an overperforming store. Then we filter based on square footage requirements and a number of different things. So it gives you the ability to directly target retailers that fit. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. I guess I'm feeling a little dismayed, because you have a good presentation, I can tell, and I bet you you have a good presentation that you could have put up on the boards here.
Sure, sure.
You've shown our community, and instead we have an item on the consent calendar.
Sure.
I think this is exciting, but I think it's something our community should know about and buy into, and not just be a consent calendar item. So I'm glad you're here and glad you made the presentation that you did.
Thank you.
We're glad you showed up here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Here a motion, then, on seven D?
Mr. Mayor, I need approval of item seven D from the consent counter.
Second.
Okay. Version second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes. Okay, we're on to item eight, our reports to council. We have one talking about transition to sheriff's office, and then a second on sidewalk dining. So we'll start on eight A, report from police chief on police department transition to county sheriff's office. Hi, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Royce, members of the city council. First of all, I just want to thank you for taking the time to recognize and appreciate Frank Harrington today. You know, I think he certainly deserved it, and he was very moved by it. So thanks again for taking the time and doing that. We have the staff report with a written update on all the things that we've done. Just a couple of things to add, and since the staff report has been written, that's happened. One the mayor spoke about earlier, which was the Art and Wine Fair. We had our booth out there. We worked well with the deputies. It was good for them, too. I mean, they were able to see this community for what it was, and they were impressed with this community. So it was a good experience for them. I did another presentation today to the Kiwanis Club during their lunch meeting today, and that went really well. They asked a lot of great questions. And again, we continue to make these presentations. I have another one at the White Oaks Neighborhood Group on Thursday night. And what we're finding as we make these presentations is that people walk away, generally will approach me after them, saying that they appreciate us taking the time to come out. There's a lot of things about it they did not understand. And I think the presentations are helping to clarify some things, and helping to get people to understand what this contract is, what it isn't, and how this will work. And then, lastly, we're just very busy, meetings all the time, every day, full calendars, going 100 miles an hour, because the date's just about three weeks away, so. That's it, and I'll take any questions.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for the frequency of your updates here. This is getting to be part of our agenda, which is good. Like that.
Questions?
So I have a couple. Mr. Klein? Mr. Royce? Chief, it says here that the department's in the final stages of completing the physical and psychological examinations for sworn personnel.
Correct.
Do you know how much longer that's going to take?
We're done. We just finished the psychologicals today.
Okay.
And then the physicals, we are like, maybe, I think there's only one or two people that have to take one or two portions of the test. So we're like 100% done with psychs and 98% done with the physicals.
Okay. Then I also have a question where you discuss, you talk about the uniforms in the report. You gave us an example of what the police cars are going to look. Are the uniforms going to be exactly the deputy uniforms that we saw at the Art and Wine Fair? Or are they going to be a hybrid of the two?
No, they'll be exactly like what we saw at Art and Wine Fair, which is basically for my uniform, I don't have to... I can wear the same thing I'm wearing now and just change the patches out, and the badge will look the same, but if you read it, it'll be different.
Okay.
But our uniforms will be the sheriff's office uniform.
Okay. And they're almost identical, from what I know.
Almost identical.
All right. And then my last thing is, in this community outreach, it shows that you got yourself, the Mayor Royce, Sheriff, and Sheriff Monks did a videotaped presentation that can be shown on the television station and the web, and maybe this is a question for the mayor. Do we know when we're going to put that up?
Greg, do we know when we're going to put that up?
No, we don't, but I'm going to find out when we're going to pick that up, put that up.
Yeah. The sooner the better, is what I'm thinking. I think it'd be a great asset for us to be able to point people to a website and say, "Hey, you can take a look. This is, you know, the three heads of what's going on."
Okay.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have. Thanks a lot, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mont? Any other questions? Mr. Grokot?
I just have a question in terms of, it doesn't have to do necessarily with the transition, but just for my sake, the council's sake, and the sake of the community, a question about the way the department operates vis-à-vis crime. Because in your staff report to us that comes in our newsletter, there's been some exciting things that have been happening, unless you're a criminal. And those are really good things, and I just want to know that those kind of operations will still take place, that we're not going to get some kind of different direction from the sheriff's department, that you'll still have a say in how we police our community and the emphasis that we have in trying to infiltrate, you know, different kind of crime rings and so forth that think they might be able to get away with something in San Carlos. I just want to be sure that those priorities will stay in place.
Well, the way the sheriff really wants to set this up is consistent with what the council wants, is that's a chief that is responsive to them and the community. And so he has told me in meetings that I've had with him, is his expectation is that, you know, this will be very, you know, I'll have his full support on the one hand, but it'll be very autonomous on the other hand. We make decisions, we make operational decisions here that are in the best interest of the community, that are desirous of the goals and ambitions of the city council, and it's going to be much more community-focused. And so the answer, short answer, is yes. We'll continue to set priorities based upon the priorities of the community and the councils, and the complaints that we receive from the community, and that sort of thing.
Well, thank you, Chief. And again, I just want to commend your department for the things recently that we read in our newsletter on some of the arrests that you've made. It's exciting stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Great. Any other questions? Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll see you next time.
Okay.
Second report is on sidewalk dining. Mr. Roy, you have a short report for us, first?
Certainly, I really don't have anything much to add.
You didn't bring yogurt or ice cream with you on the sidewalk?
No, that sounds like a good idea. Giant's one, by the way. Pretty good. But this is nothing much more to add to what the written presentation is, but just to sum it up a little bit, about three or four months ago, you looked at fees, and one of the fees you had questions about was what is charged for encroachment permits for sidewalk dining in San Carlos. We talked a little bit about branding and marketing and business retention, and sidewalk dining, I'd say, is part of the brand that you have here, part of what it makes San Carlos, what people recognize and cherish. Right now, we have kind of a minimal policy here. We just basically charge a one-time fee, $239, to allow that to happen without a whole lot of follow-through or inspection or requirements, just basically safety requirements. When we surveyed other cities, there was a range of policies. Some, Redwood City essentially subsidizes the program. They charge $10 as a one-time fee, and basically to try to get it going, try to get that activity going. The rest, the middle of the range is kind of like us, us where they're in that same kind of dollar amount. And then others put more review on top of it. They want to make sure it looks consistent with their... With their... The look they're trying to achieve. So there's a planning aspect and an architectural review in some cases. So it's really a policy matter. The council could go with this. It's certainly not an engineering issue. We've covered that of the safety aspects with our current permit. So bring it back for council discussion and direction.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Maybe start... Mr. Grokot, work your way.
I just had one. I actually tend to like where we are with our fees. We seem to be in a, you know, there's a very strong dichotomy here of, you know, about the $300 range, and then it jumps up to over $1,000 with the other three cities. But I did notice that those... Two of those cities that charge quite a bit also involve the ABC, the Alcohol Beverage Control Department. And it seems like it's a requirement. I know some of our restaurants do that already, have the barriers at either end, I think probably for different reasons than this. But my question is, if we were to incorporate just that one thing, does it cost that much more? Is that related to this jump in the fees? Or could we do it and keep our fees, you know, in the more reasonable range?
I'd have to look into it to be sure, but my initial thinking is, no, it's not that hard to coordinate the requirements with ABC requirements.
Okay.
And just write that into our current encroachment agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Grisilli? That leads me to a question, then. If a business does not serve alcohol, then they wouldn't have to have a barrier. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Just thought, because there's a lot of coffee shops and other places that I could think of that wouldn't be able to afford to put up barriers, or, I mean, just, or they're a very small operation, and it doesn't make any sense.
Thanks.
Mr. Klein?
Okay, just one question. We surveyed 10 cities, and nine responded, and then of the nine, two do not issue sidewalk permits, which are Daly City and Belmont. Do they even have sidewalk dining?
I don't think Belmont does. And I can't think of any in Daly City.
Okay, so that may be that they're not... Not that they're not charging, they just don't have it.
They just don't have it, yeah.
Okay. That's my other question.
Mr. Mont?
Mr. Mayor, what I... I would tend to agree that I'd prefer to keep our fee at the lower end. Some of the things you did put up here, the removal of furniture after closing time, I was a little surprised we don't have that in our code. I guess I would scratch my head about trash receptacles. Some restaurants, it may be appropriate that we have it, others may not. And the other one that I was curious about was the certificate of insurance, that apparently we don't require that right now. I think that does make sense, that if you are going to have taking up encroachment on the sidewalk, that you should have some additional insurance to cover liability for things like that. So with those, those small tweaks, I kind of like where we are.
Okay.
And my thoughts are, and there was some discussion last time when we talked about outdoor dining, is to have some level of flexibility, and what I mean, no charge for businesses to do, for dining people to do what other stores do. And my example was the antique shop puts a carriage out there with some antiques. There's a clothing shop and a suitcase shop that puts, or clothing shops will put like a rack of clothes. And so if you drive by Tooty Fruity now, they're not a dining establishment, they actually don't have tables, but they have about a half a dozen chairs. Because when you get a yogurt, it's, to me, not dining out, and do we need to charge them? To me, it's like, hey, you're a comfortable place to sit against the window. But more importantly, when you drive on San Carlos Avenue or Laurel Street, if, like the pizza place, if there's one table with two chairs and people are eating pizza, that's how you advertise. And to help small business, to me, the one table at the pizza place, or the six chairs at the Tooty Fruity, kind of, is our role to be business-friendly and try to help them for people that come, we have a lot of people coming in from out of town that don't walk, and they drive, and they're looking for that. So to me, it's more advertising. I think a San Ramo, or a Town, or Pia Cherry, or the ones that do the outdoor dining, I think very clearly we need to do this. But as you come back, my only recommendation, when you come back with the city ordinance in working with the Planning Department and yourself, I would hope that we could have some business-friendly attitude and flexibility in providing those real small, unique shops a little bit of advertising that I consider different than outdoor dining.
Right, right. Well, as you alluded to, Mayor, the zoning ordinance update will give guidance on this topic in terms of what it should look like, what's allowed, what's not allowed.
Yes.
And so we'll see, that might, things might change a little bit after that. Now, on terms of what's charged for a fee, you know, the fee is based on the cost of providing the service. And it's pretty much the same amount of effort to work with the Pia Cherry versus the pizza place with the two tables, because basically it involves, you know, we're going out there looking at it, entering into an agreement, having them sign the agreement, it's just a couple hours of work to just work, do the paperwork. So if the Council wanted to subsidize that fee for smaller businesses, that would be a policy option available to you.
Okay. So let me ask you the question. So the antique store that puts a stroller out with a few antique items, they're not a dining establishment, they don't pay a fee?
They're actually--
But does the building department go out and see how much stuff they're putting in front, and how close it comes with the brick line?
Yeah.
So I'm not buying your argument, I'm sorry.
Right now, they're prohibited from doing that, unless it's in an alcove. Like, if it's in an alcove behind the sidewalk, they're allowed to do that.
You're saying they are not allowed to do that?
Yeah, in an alcove, they are allowed to put out merchandise.
So how about the, so the antique store and the luggage store, they do that? So is that not--
I think it's in an alcove, I'm pretty sure.
Alcove?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, we don't have an active enforcement program, you know.
Sure. But I was saying, they're inspecting those sites too, was my main point, so here's a little bit, I'm not, it's, it's a subjective review here on some of the stuff.
Do I understand, Mr. Mayor, that this is going to come back for some further, so you're just touching base with us on this?
Yeah.
So I think when, when Mr. Wild brings this back, I think your item is worthy of discussion, you know.
And I just wanted to provide that, so when you come back, we actually talk, talk about that, and we'll see where Council goes with it.
I would, you'll see the zoning ordinance next year, actually September is, I think, when it comes to, we'll look at the fees before then, next May or so. So that's, I think, when you would see it again. I suppose what you're directing us to do is bring back some options that would let you create a subsidy for smaller encroachments if you chose to.
Good, that's great. Any other questions?
Yeah, one more question. Mr. Wild, I brought this up the last time, and I wanted to bring it up again. Is there anything in the encroachment permit where it talks about not blocking the sidewalk?
Yeah.
We do have issues with that. I understand that I'm taller than your average person, I'm not much taller, but my wife is much shorter than I am, and she has issues walking down the sidewalk past certain restaurants. And so I'm thinking about people in wheelchairs and other issues like that, where they are bought, taking up a great deal of the room on the sidewalk, or they have overhangs that are clipping people in the head.
Right.
Is there an issue, is there something we can do about that in the permit to make it much more stringent?
The permit requires seven-foot clearance above the sidewalk.
Okay, I'm not seven feet tall, and I'm getting hit in the head, so.
So they're violating their agreement, then. And let me know, we'll go out with, as resources are available, and remind them of what they're required to do.
Okay.
Here's a chair.
Then should, when you bring this back, would there also be some item in here for, you know, if you, maybe you get one violation, but if the staff has to come back, then you pay some kind of, at least for the time and effort of your staff going out there, a fine that covers costs?
Yeah. The way it is right now, it's written right now, is basically you lose the privilege if you have to come out more than once, I think.
Oh, well, that's much better stick.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty strict.
Okay. Great.
Well, thank you very much.
Great.
Those are our two reports. Moving to unfinished business, Agenda 9, we have a 9A and 9B. 9 considers parking at Laurel Street Park, and 9B is part of our strategic plan update. So with that, let's start with 9A, Mr. Wild. This is consideration adoption of ordinance number 1423, amending San Carlos Municipal Code and amending section 10.32.224 regarding parking at Laurel Street Park during farmer's market, and repealing section 10.32.228 regarding suspension of parking time limits during the holiday season.
Nothing further to add to the staff report, Mayor. Issues were discussed last Council meeting, and I think we put this on this portion of the agenda since--
We had a good discussion last time on this, 9A. Any questions of staff or comments from Council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance number 1423. Ordinance of the City of San Carlos, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, amending section 10.32.224 regarding parking at Laurel Street Park during the farmer's market, and repealing section 10.32.228 regarding suspension of parking time limits during the holiday season.
Second. Okay. Grokot?
Councilman Belmont?
Yes.
Councilman Gassily?
Yes.
Councilman Grokot?
No.
Councilman, Councilman Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes. 9B is consideration of approving amendments to the city's strategic plan as six-month objective matrix. Rebecca, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Rebecca Mendenhall, I'm the Acting Administrative Services Director. In August, the City Council met with the Department Directors to review the city's mission statement, vision statement, existing three-year goals, and develop new six-month objectives. The Council formally approved this strategic plan at the September 13 meeting. Before you tonight is a request for your approval to make the following changes to that plan. One is to revise certain objective dates as noted in the staff report. This is not unusual, as the Department Directors have now had an opportunity to meet with their full staff to discuss the details and the timelines of those objectives. Secondly, we'd like to add a new objective. This is for the Community Development Director to prepare a draft telecommunications ordinance update for Council consideration. This comes as a result of the increasing pressure from cellular providers to install antennas in residential neighborhoods. And finally, we'd like to delete the objective for the Parks and Recreation Director to present to Council a contract for a Trails Master Plan. This item has been requested to be removed since Council already approved a Trails Connection Plan in 2007 that serves a similar purpose. So the Department Directors and I are available for any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Klein?
Yeah, I have a question on the-- Last item that Mendenhall brought up about deleting the Trails Master Plan. I understand the purpose for deleting it, but it says in the staff report in favor of an alternative objective. When will we have a discussion about an alternative objective? Or is that a question for Mr. Long?
We'll be coming back to Council for a mid-year adjustment in the CIP, capital improvement projects, and at that point, we'll be requesting funds for those alternative objectives.
That's my only question. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Klein?
Go on.
Mr. Maud?
I was just--
Back to you?
Yeah, I'll come back, yeah.
Mr. Grokot?
I wanted to hear from staff about item 6, and why the delay on that item.
So just to let everybody, who knows, 6 deals with the update on the high-speed rail, believe, is that number 6?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of Council, Brian Moore, Assistant City Manager. To answer Councilmember Grokot's question, there are two developments that are coming up in the next couple of weeks that we thought would make the report to Council much more interesting. First of all, the high-speed rail engineers at HNTB, that's the company that's doing the actual design, and they're about 7% to 8% done now, is developing a series of what they call schematic drawings, and this is to give the cities and the public and others a better understanding of what some of the design alternatives look like. For example, there's been a lot of interest in something called the cut-and-cover trench, but as Vice Mayor Maud could tell you, as a member of the Policy Working Group on High Speed Rail, the cut-and-cover trench actually is, has a series of covers and then openings, and I think some people have been a bit confused by that, so the engineers are going to be drawing some drawings that will be available in the next week or two. And so we thought that by moving this item back a couple of weeks, we could provide those drawings to Council as well. The other development is that staff has, excuse me, weekly, monthly meetings with the engineers on high-speed rail to talk about the items in the Council's letter, and also other items that are priority to the city. It's worth noting that the upcoming appointment, as it's called this month, will actually be a joint appointment between our neighbors to the north and south, namely, it'll be San Carlos, Belmont, and Redwood City. And as Council will recall, during the creation of this item at your strategic plan, one of the items the Council said they were interested in is hearing about the desires of the two neighboring cities. So staff felt that since we're going to be having that meeting in a couple of weeks, rather than presenting this item to you in December, it would probably be better to present it to you in early November, after we've had that three-city meeting at the staff level, so we can have additional information from the two neighboring cities on where their staff and where their elected officials are. I mean, during the process of this project, we have seen some changes in direction from the neighboring cities, and I think personally it'll be very interesting to hear both where the staff and the elected officials are in both Belmont and Redwood City, so we'll have that information in, I believe it's towards the end of this month. So those are the main reasons why we felt we would probably be able to give you a much more thorough and compelling report in November than we would later this month.
You keep saying in November, but this says to change it from November 1 to December 1.
Right, and I think that on all of these items, we typically have the date so that if it slips, there's one more meeting. So right now, I think if I remember this correctly, we have the schedule for the first meeting in November, but in case it moved to the second meeting in November, we would still be able to meet it by December 1.
Okay, I see what you're doing. All right, very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Here's the chair.
Mr. Mayor, the other point that is going to happen with the, especially for item 6, I haven't talked about this publicly, but one of the things that I'm doing as a function of the Caltrain Board is, I'm actually going to be walking the tracks from San Francisco to San Jose. So one of the things is that I'll be able to at least look at the people on the dais and say--
Just the side of the track?
Yeah, literally not in the middle. But at least be able to say that we have, I've been able to see every inch of where the, where the train is going, and do some measurements also to say, if cut-and-cover comes in, this is how much it has, this is how much throughput people have, so there's a question that'll be hopefully answered there. But I did want to go to item number 5, Mr. Mayor, the deletion. What I would prefer to do is actually, if we could put this as a pending, so it's still on our plan, and I understand that there's going to be a revision that we'd like to talk about in the next several months, so I'd just like to keep this as a particular item, no action will be taken, but let's keep it as pending, so we realize that we do want to do something with it down the road. Okay?
Okay. Any other comments?
I'm confused by that, because what staff just told us is that they already have a connection plan, and that's why they're taking this off, because they don't feel like they need this.
So let me ask Mr. Long, just to follow up. You had mentioned you wanted to do a follow-up on how you were going to deal with a follow-up on this plan, correct?
That's correct. And it says that there is, the strategic plan calls for a recommendation for a master plan, and after doing some research, I realized that there's probably no need for a master plan. There is a need for an alternative plan, which would be kind of a Trails Development Plan, which would identify specific projects within the Trails Connection Plan that would be more appropriate.
So the term is Trails Development Plan?
Yes, so a master plan would kind of identify where the trails are going and indicate where the connection plans. We already have that information.
Okay.
So at this point, we're going to identify some of those trails that are being planned for development. So we need environmental review, design, and possibly money to create those trails.
So what you're saying, just to clarify, we're taking it off the strategic objective, six-month objective, but you're on the hook for coming back to us on your alternative proposal?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that'll be part of the CIP plan, mid-year review.
To that, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I have a question, because something that had come up earlier from, that I brought back to the Council from the County BPAC meeting, is that we are remiss in having a good pedestrian plan for the city, and so I'm sitting here wondering if those two might be intermingled, or does it make sense just to keep them separate and deal with them separately?
I think at this point, it makes sense to keep them separate.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Your motion on then?
Through the chair, I have another item that I--
Oh, please.
Didn't notice in here, and it's something that we've talked about as a Council. I wonder if we should add it in so that we can track it, just like everything else, and that's the electronic, the DIES policy, or whatever we're calling it, for use of electronics from the DIES by the Council.
Yes, so Mr. Moore, you want to report on that? This is, we have a subcommittee, two Council people, to report back soon, I think, on electronic access.
Correct. I believe that particular item is scheduled for the first meeting in December, and staff is doing initial research, and then we're going to run it by your Council Subcommittee. But yeah, the Council certainly, if you wish, you can formally add it to your strategic plan.
Yeah, I would appreciate that, if we could just plug it in so we can follow it like everything else.
Is that okay with us?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Good idea. We'll add that in. So you make a motion, let's do it with that addition. Can I hear a motion?
So I'll move that we approve the staff-recommended changes to our strategic plan, six-month matrix, with the inclusion also of our electronics policy.
Good. Here's a second?
Second.
Okay. Grokot, please.
Councilman Belmont?
Yes.
Councilman Gassily?
Yes.
Councilman Grokot?
Yes.
Councilman Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes. Okay, that takes us through unfinished business. We have two items on new business, which are the last two items on the agenda, other than closed-session items. The first is a consideration of a loan to the redevelopment agency, and the second is recording of our fire board meetings. So that's 10A and 10B. Let's start off with 10A. Consideration of the city loan to redevelopment agency of net proceeds received from the sale of property at Holly Street and Industrial Boulevard, which are going on right as we speak here, I guess.
Good evening again--
Mr. Swicki, please.
Good evening again, honorable Mayor and City Council, Mark Swicki, Economic Development and Housing Manager. This past Friday, we closed on the sale of the city-owned property at Holly and Industrial to In-N-Out Burger. We received proceeds into the general fund of just north of $1.5 million. 10 months ago, at City Council, Council discussed options for use of the sales proceeds. Council members had expressed interest in having the proceeds invested in a manner that provides a long-term revenue stream to the city. Staff had recommended that the proceeds be loaned to the redevelopment agency to achieve Council's desired result of long-term revenue growth. A loan to the agency would allow us to invest in economic development initiatives that are expected to generate significant long-term growth in property tax, sales tax, and potentially hotel tax, and to carry out other redevelopment plan goals and objectives. Staff is recommending a loan of 26 years, interest only for 16 years, followed by 10 years of amortizing principal and interest payments. The reason we choose 26 years is because that's the remaining life of the redevelopment agency to collect property tax increment and repay the general fund for the loan. Staff recommends an interest rate of 7.6%. We looked at the historical average of capitalization rates, which are what are used by real estate investors in investing in property. It's also comparable to the minimum rate of return for a commercial loan, commercial real estate loan. Along with these parameters, would result in annual interest payments of $114,000 for 16 years, followed by 10 years of payments of $219,528 to retire the loan over the last 10 years. Q of interest income would be more than $2.5 million that would accrue to the general fund over that time period. I'm available for any questions.
Questions? Mr. Gassily?
Mr. Swicki, I'm sorry, I do have one question. In light of the fact that the state has, last year, sort of, how can I put this politely, stolen our money from the redevelopment agency, by putting money into the redevelopment agency, is that at risk? In other words, if we don't have any money, they can't take it, but if we have money, do you see where I'm going here?
Yes, and I don't believe it's a great risk, because it is a demand note. The city can change the terms of that note at any time and demand repayment to the general fund. There's usually some pretty good advance notice that the state is interested in taking the money.
Okay.
What the state is actually taking is tax increment money that's flowing to the agency, not necessarily money that the agency has borrowed. Not to say that there aren't other agencies that had spent that money and still had to pay the state back from other borrowings, or take it from their housing fund. So there are a number of other alternatives. We actually lent money to the agency to make that payment this past year.
Okay. Well, I'm just concerned, the fact that, you see where I'm going here, all of a sudden you do this, and it seems to make good sense, and then all of a sudden somebody takes the money, and now it can't be repaid because it isn't there, so, okay.
If I could ask a question there, initially, I'll go last, but it relates to Mr. Griselli's question. So remember we discussed last time, if you could clarify, if we ran into a situation where the funds were still available in the redevelopment agency, we did this, it's in redevelopment. If we had a need, you know, we found a piece of property, great deal, we want to buy for 15 million, it's worth, or it has a lot of value for us, and we want to do it, what is the procedure in, or is there availability to move funds back the other way?
Yes. You are both the agency board and the city council, so you can amend the terms, you can have the loan repaid and go do that.
Okay. Good, that's what I was going to hear. Great.
I have a follow-up question to that, and that is, just to dig into the details a little bit, because I'm in agreement with Mr. Royce, and in fact, I'll go, I'll make one other comment about that. These are unprecedented times that we're not likely to see again anytime soon, depending on how long this period lasts, but property is to be bought right now. It's a buyer's market, of course. And if we could find property adjacent to one of our parks to expand our parks, or, you know, a large enough piece of property to add an additional park, we all know from other reports that we're way low on the acreage that we should have for a city of our size. So I know that's something that I'd be interested in seeing us pursue and look for. Now, let's say, as Mr. Royce suggested, we found such a deal, and we wanted to move on it quickly. The procedure for us to buy property and have money available versus getting that money and making it available from the RDA back over to the general fund, what is the timing on that? And then further, you've indicated some uses that could be good for these funds. Is there any tie-up to, you know, strings attached with those things?
Only to the extent that you have committed to do something with the money through the redevelopment agency, and then it's no longer there. Now you're waiting for property tax increment to come back into the agency to repay, or to build up enough to fully repay the loan. But since you're wearing both the redevelopment agency hat and the city council hat, you'll know when you're committing those funds. And at the time that you commit those funds, that's when you should say, is there another use of this money that we would prefer at this time, or do we want to invest it? The idea that we want to invest it with the agency is actually going to return on the money, not just that the agency is paying interest back to the general fund, but that we can increase property taxes and sales taxes, which are also going to improve the general fund and create more of a balance for the city to work with over time.
Okay, and then a follow-up question. If we take action tonight, how soon do we start seeing interest payments? What's the time period on that?
I think we're going to be doing annual interest payments, but that, again, that's, you know, we were sort of making it simple for the finance department to manage the loan. It would be simple interest and have it payable every year.
Any other questions, comments? So, yeah, I just have one more, just to follow up. I just, yeah, a little bit related to everything that we're talking about, too. The only, you know, this makes sense in a lot of ways. We just need to be careful, though, on how we view interest income. Interest income, I don't know what the amounts are, but it's pretty significant. We got 2 million, 3 million coming in over so many years, here and there, at 7.5%. To me, interest income is basically just keeping your balance sheet even with fair market value. That's what it is. You've got money in a CD, or money in a house, I mean, of course, there's different returns is where it varies, but generally, interest is the cost of the money, and what you could earn for it in a marketplace. So, worst-case scenario, if we didn't do anything in the redevelopment for 26 years, which we wouldn't do, but let's say, we put 15 million there, it pays interest to the city, the general fund, and we just spend a little here and there of all that, well, 26 years later, the redevelopment plans to do something, well, if redevelopment had earned 5% per year over 26 years, it'd be $50 million. It wouldn't be 15, and what's going to happen? If it takes a long time, it's still worth nothing, and it has any roading value. But that's not the situation here. I'm hoping we could turn this money over pretty quickly with the redevelopment, and I'm very satisfied to find out that we need to look at both sides of the businesses that we manage, our city business and the redevelopment. If we see a better deal, we should be able to move on it. So I'm comforted by the answer to your question. But do be careful on the interest payment. It's really not that big of an income item. It's a kind of a keep an even number to your balance sheet, not, it's not income, in my opinion, personal opinion.
Of course, government accounting is different, so.
A little bit.
A little bit. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Chair, please.
To approve a city council resolution number-
City council is 86, and RDA is 178.
Let go separately, Mr. Rubens?
That's what I'd recommend.
Okay, city council, resolution number 86, 2010-86. Resolution of city council of the city of San Carlos approving and authorizing the execution of a loan and repayment agreement with the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency.
Your second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Klein.
Roll call.
Councilmember Maude?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocart?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Griselli, keep going.
I'd like to make a motion from a redevelopment agency resolution, I apologize, number 101-
178.
2010-178. Resolution of the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency approving and authorizing the execution of a loan and repayment agreement with the city of San Carlos.
Second. Okay. First and second, roll call, please.
Director Long?
Yes.
Director Griselli?
Yes.
Director Gocart?
Yes.
Director Klein?
Yes.
Chair Royce?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for that report. Last item, before we go to closed session, is under new business, 10B. This is consideration authorizing the city manager to contract with Millbrae Community Television for recording and broadcasting meetings of the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Board on the San Carlos cable TV channel and website, and appropriate $3,000 for this project. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. As the staff report indicates, at the last meeting of the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Board, the board was presented with a letter from the firefighters' union indicating that from this point forward, they would be videotaping the meetings for purposes of showing them at a later date to their members. After the meeting, I had a conversation with the two San Carlos representatives, Mr. Klein and Mr. Maude, who expressed interest in having the city also videotape these meetings, presumably using someone like Millbrae TV, so that the general public could also watch these meetings. This is a relatively low-cost item, however, from a policy standpoint, staff thought it was appropriate to bring it back to the full council, since, as you know, at this point, the only board and commission that we do broadcast in the city is, in fact, the city council. The idea here would be to do this on a minimal-cost basis, as you can see by the attached proposal. This is kind of a bare-bones approach to things. For the nine meetings that you'd have for the balance of the year, the cost would be in the neighborhood of $3,000. So that's the item. I'll leave it to your two fire board representatives to add any additional comment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any other thoughts, sir, from-
Pretty much echo what our assistant city manager said. These meetings are now being taped by local 2400. I think it's important for us to have a master copy of the tape. But I also think it's just, it's good business. We're spending over 25% of the general fund in these meetings. We should have them videotaped. We should have them available to either be rebroadcasted, or if people would like to have them as public records. It's just, it's good business, especially with what's going on now. We need to be as transparent as possible with what's going on, with the situation with our fire department, and this is just one other way for us to continually to do things above board. That's it.
Mr. Maude, anything to add?
Very little, just the notion that we are trying to act as stewards for the public funds. This is a department with significant public funds. San Carlos pays a good chunk for this, and to add transparency and make certain that people know what's going on, I think this is an appropriate thing to do.
Okay. Thoughts?
A question, if I could, from Mr. Moore. It said in the staff report that you were going to possibly get a chance to talk to Belmont, if you talked to them, about sharing the costs of this?
We have talked to the Belmont staff about it last week at the dissolution meeting that we had, but this was their first exposure to the idea, so we have not heard anything back from them. I don't know that they've had a chance, frankly, to raise it with their elected officials yet, but they are now aware of the concept, yes.
So the concept, then, would be to tape every meeting, or just certain scheduled meetings?
Every meeting.
So, having gone through this once before, where we were meeting seemingly weekly, if not daily, with some of our meetings, because of the last thing that we did four years ago, I think this item is going to cost a lot more than $270 a meeting, or should I say, more than $3,000? It could possibly cost a lot more than that, because it could possibly be that there's going to be lots more meetings than just the scheduled meetings.
I guess to Councilmember Griselli's point, that could occur, however, at one of the recent meetings, we did hear comments from both of the Belmont council members that they would like to keep the fire board meetings to a minimum, and they'd like to see most of the dissolution process happen at the city level, at the fire department level. So I'm not personally anticipating more meetings, but again, I defer to the fire commissioners, and they may have more insight and eye on this question.
Of course, this is a dissolution. Last time, we were trying to put it back together, so I appreciate the fact that that certainly, last time, could have predicated a lot more meetings. If you're dissolving, perhaps there's no reason to meet, because you've already, you know, possibly gone for that.
Yeah. Well, and again, I think it also is a function, again, of this council and your direction to your commissioners. I mean, certainly the direction, apparently, that the Belmont commissioners have gotten from their council is to minimize the number of meetings. That could change, of course, as you point out, but right now, that seems to be the direction.
Yeah. Through the chair to echo what Mr. Moore is saying. I see no reason to think that we're going to have more meetings as of now, because it is a dissolution. There hasn't been an attempt by either side to go through what was done five years ago, and to put it back together, and to have all these multiple meetings. We've heard, it's been echoed during the fire board meetings, how the fire department is breaking up, and so we should only focus on running the department for the next nine months, and let the staff handle the dissolution. And each city should seek their own fire service provider after that. So I see no, I mean, and that's just now. It could change. And I definitely understand, if it changes, we'll definitely have to come back and talk about it. No, I appreciate that, and I think your point's well-taken, and I think you're probably right. But I just wanted to bring that point up. And the second point, though, to sort of piggyback on what you said, if it is going to dissolve, and we are going to have possibly even less meetings than more meetings, we're going to be discussing the fire department here. This is where the fire department's going to be discussed. Apparently, the fire department is going to be, not discussed very much at those meetings. So I just, I don't know, I, whatever. I haven't jumped on board on this one yet, I guess, I don't know, for whatever reason, but, because I'm just, I'm thinking it's Pandora's box, that I know it provides 25% of a budget, I appreciate that, and that's a lot, and then, but isn't every decision that the planning commission makes, let's say, when we get to the, some of the approvals of some of the larger projects that are coming down the pike, including even our hospital that's possibly set up, isn't that a lot of things? I mean, I'm just, I'm worried, the precedents we set, now it's like, well, why can't we, why shouldn't we be taking it? And again, I'm, this rhetorical question. No, well, no, I mean, you're very right, saying that, but the problem is, is no one's taping those other meetings. We are being taped now. So if we are being taped, it's up to this city to protect its council members, who it sends in there, to make sure we have a master copy of the tape, because you don't know where that tape goes. You don't know what happens to it. There is a possibility you can splice things, you can do whatever you want, but if the council members are being taped, I believe it's the city has to protect its council members by making sure that we have a master copy of what is being said. Okay, well, I see your point. Mr. Rubens, I'd ask you that question. What do you, what do you think about that? Because, and I certainly don't want to put our council members at risk in any public meetings they have, but there's, all of us attend a lot of public meetings that aren't taped, per se, with audio, or videotaped, they're audiotaped. I know almost everything, like the sewer board meeting this morning, that I was at. And so I guess my question is, what is the, what is this, what would be your opinion if you have one on it, or if there's a city situation that would, you know, again, trying to protect the people that are on the boards?
Well, I think the main difference here is that there is an outside organization that has provided notice that there will be taping the meetings. I think it's important, staff has indicated it's important, that the city, for its interest, have an accurate and complete videotape record of the official business at the fire board. In part, I think it is to, so council members know exactly what happened at the meeting, and the outside agency would be under no obligation to provide us with a copy of the tape, although we would be, or, excuse me, the fire board would be under an obligation to provide a copy of that tape, or we would be required to provide a copy of the tape under the Public Records Act to make it available. So our tape will become, excuse me, I keep saying "our" tape, but it's our tape, the city's tape. It's also a tape that's a public record, and that would be available for all the public to review.
So basically, this is set up because of the fact that someone wants to tape, or is planning on, perhaps already has, started to tape with the fire board meetings. So if somebody came in to a planning commission meeting and said, "I'm going to start taping all the planning commission meetings," this could come up again?
That's possible. I think we should take it on a case-by-case basis.
I understand, I'm just saying, it could, it could come up again. But the key, the point is, I'm trying to get to the point here, the point being is that it's outside group of folks that are taping, and therefore, we want to make sure, again, as Mr. Klein said earlier, about the control of the tape, so to speak, so that the public record is the public record.
Absolutely, that's the main point.
Mr. Gocart?
So I would like to actually hear from the chief on two things. Number one, I would question why this isn't being handled the same way a budget is from the fire department, that it goes to the board first, they get a review of it, make recommendations back to the councils, and, or our council in Belmont's fire board, fire district board, number one. And number two, if there would be any relief from Helen or anybody else attending the meetings, could we find, if we're going to spend money, could we possibly find some savings where Helen wouldn't have to actually attend the meetings, but could transcript from a video after, later on? So those are for the chief.
Welcome, Chief Frye.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Doug Frye, fire chief. The answer to the second part of the question is, I'm not sure that it would provide much relief for Helen to be there. Lots of the action that's taken is taped, and she goes through that piece, and as you've all seen, the minutes are exceptional in regards to the information she gathers from that. I would think it'd be somewhat superior, somewhat less, because you're not there, and so there's the inflection, and there's some of the other components that go along with that. So I don't think I'd see very much relief from her not, not being part of that. And the first question, could you just clarify that for me one more time?
The first question is, you know, my understanding of the JPA agreement is that, you know, decisions like this would, you know, it's the fire board, so it's the fire board being taped. It seems to me it should be a discussion first, of the fire board, do they want to, you know, take on this expense and task and so forth, and then vote on it, and make a recommendation back to our council in Belmont's fire district. I don't understand why it's coming to us as a council first.
Well, this came to, the last time we met was August 25th, when the fire commission met. I presented the letter to the fire board that evening, so it was not agendaized, so there was no action that could be taken to discuss it at that point. I currently do not have a plan for the agenda for this next meeting, this next week. I will say that the labor group is not attending the meetings for obvious reasons, and I think that one of the reasons that they're, they're videoing these is that they can show the crews. They want to be able to show them in the privacy of the stations, or put them on the infrared and deal with that. I don't know that there's anything more than that, but, you know, they are not attending any of the meetings, and so I think that it's more information for them, more than anything else, although, you know, local 2400 has made reference to that, you know, they're concerned, and they also want transparency as well. So I certainly understand that piece.
And just one follow-up question, it relates to what Mr. Griselli was saying about, and Mr. Klein about, you know, our council members, the possibility of the tapes being changed, and so on and so forth. But you just reminded me that there is a, there's a recording of the audio that Helen keeps, and so if any, I don't suppose I have to ask you, but it would seem to me that if anything got changed, compared to the audio, how much could you change on a video, and for what effect, or what purpose? So, you know, we have a tape, if anybody wants, I've done that, I've come in and requested, can I hear the tapes, or have a copy, and then listen to the minutes of the meeting, or the, you know, proceedings of the meeting on an audio basis. So, okay, thank you very much, chief.
So I have one comment, not going to change, I'm very much in support of what I see here, though, but I do want to just briefly talk, and in fact, I'll start with a story. I was with a professional photographer Friday in Chinatown. He had all the fancy camera equipment, and the batteries went dead, and he pulled out a phone like this, and started taking five-megapixel pictures with this, which a lot of people can do with their BlackBerrys and their iPhones. And so where I'm headed with that story is, we're very close, from a technology point of view, a file, whether or not it's an MS Word, or our e-packets, all of our files, our maps, our photographs, and even videos, basically, it's all data, it's just a file, and you're going to see much more availability of all this stuff. And the direction is, the creator, the camera crew and the editor are gone, you know? You do it all, you just set it here, and you push a button, and it goes two hours. And so I'm thinking, you know, there's technology, there's products out there for $200 now. There are these flip phones with a microphone, and you set the flip phone, you don't even need a tripod, it's just set, you could set it, it records audio very well, especially with a microphone, it records video, it could be used at a planning commission meeting, we can make it available. But definitely, I think, during this transition period, I'm not trying to save a few bucks, because I do want to be visible, I want to make sure we do a good job, maybe this isn't the good time to experiment, but that's why I'm bringing it out. Is this a time, you know, just to make it simple, and then just cover ourselves with audio and video, high-definition, good sound, or do we pay a little bit more and make sure it's done right? I basically refer to you, what do you think, and I'm ready to move on with your proposal. I do want to bring it up.
Mayor Royce, I completely agree that we need to get more innovative, but we have eight days, so I think we go ahead with this, and then in the future, we talk about ways to make things more transparent with the new technology out there.
We could start and always change.
Yeah, that's true.
Oh, okay. Answer for my question.
Then with that, then I will move for approval of item 10B, consideration of authorizing city manager to contract with the Millbrae Community Television for recording and broadcasting meetings of the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Board on the San Carlos Cable TV channel and website, appropriate $3,000 for this project.
Second on that?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli.
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot.
No.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Mayor Royce.
Yes.
Okay, that concludes the entertainment part of our council meeting. We are moving now, this, we just went through 10A and B. Item 11, we will be adjourning to closed session, we'll be coming back to this room, Mr. Rubens, and reporting on those in this room?
Yes, we will.
At the end of closed sessions. Any overview you want to do of the topics here to the public on our discussions?
Well, I'd just like to make a few announcements about a few of the closed-session items. Item 11A, there's a change in the labor negotiator who's going to be presenting, it's going to be Chief Fry, rather than the listed person, Coradino. Also in the session, under 11A, will be special counsel Casman, myself, Jeff Malpe, Brian Mora, and I'm not sure if anyone else is going to be attending that session. Oh, and Rebecca Mendenhall is going to be attending. And then on item 11D, in addition to labor negotiator Mendenhall, it'll be Jeff Malpe, Brian Mora.
Is Janet here?
Janet Bow, and then myself. And then on item 11E, the closed session will be with me as your labor negotiator.
Okay. I recommend, it's just a little bit after 8:30, if we could meet at 8:35 in the conference room. We'll start at 8:35.
Excuse me, I misspoke on E. It's optional for me to be in that item, but I may be attending that item.
Okay.